I'd like to welcome everybody to our Nevada Community School District Board of Education meeting for November 20th, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order and I would seek approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a meeting. Brian, has anybody reached out to us?
No.
Now we'll move us into our action agenda, bringing back for our second reading on 4.1, our Wellness Policy.
Yeah, those are a few of my from the last meeting with a couple, a couple minor additions in preparation for the nutrition audit next week.
Refresh my memory, what, what gets audited in this particular audit? I think you call it a desk audit? Is it just a review of policies?
No, this one is actually not just a desk audit. They're onsite, so they'll be meeting with Doyle and Deja. There are a number of documents, policies, procedures that they've already had to upload for them so that they could kind of do a preview prior to their visit. And then they come in for a day or two. They'll have someone, will meet with the business office to go over some of those procedures and things of that nature, different accounts and ordering and things of that nature.
I would think we'd be in very good standing after looking at your budget numbers there, Brian, in the packet. So I wouldn't expect any problems coming out of that. It's just as, sorry, we gotta go through it, but I think we have a good story for them to see. Anybody else have any questions? This will be our last reading and it is an action item.
Move approval of item 4.1, the Wellness Policy, the second and final reading.
Second.
Motion and second to approve our Wellness Policy as listed in the board packet and discussed tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 4.2, approval of the abstract of the school board election. Who wants that? Brian?
On Friday, the board certified the election results. Nevada School Director-at-Large, Martin Architty, Leanne Harder, Thomas Meyer, all received the top three, vote getter, top three vote getter. They had a scattering of 18 other ones. Top three got the job.
Congratulations to all parties.
They don't identify the, the write-ins, do they?
No, and I would just, wouldn't you just love to know their names?
If they're under a certain threshold.
Yeah, it's 5% or something?
5 or 10%.
Just love to know their names. But lost to history now. So that is it in a nutshell. I would look on page eight, though, and when you see the listings of the county elections that had taken place, I didn't see Colonesco School District.
No, it's because their, their votes are scattered over three counties.
Okay.
Those are all within the county.
Okay.
You have all three county boards that have to certify that election.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if I'd noticed before, we had some, we have some Story County residents who apparently are in West Marshall School District.
Right.
I don't know if I was aware of that before.
Yeah.
It's not very many, but it shouldn't surprise me, I guess.
West Marshall actually has a sliver of Story County south of New 30. If you look at the map, you wouldn't think it was there, but there you go. Well, it's an action agenda. It's pretty straightforward. Just speaks to what the community decided to do and reaffirmed the job that I believe that we have been done. And we just need to act on it, so we'll take a motion.
I'll move approval of the abstract of board election.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt the rendering of the abstract of the elections that took place last Tuesday. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5.1, we have a consent agenda from last week's meeting, or two weeks ago's meeting. And we have the bills attached. Everybody have a chance to look and see if we buy Cooper a transmission, all the money he makes.
Looking at the bills on page 15, I saw Department of Education for bus inspections. I don't know that I've ever noticed that before. We pay the state to inspect our buses?
Yes, we did.
Isn't that lovely?
You would think that would be in the tag dollars. Anybody see any bills that they have any questions they'd like to ask administration about?
Just on the P-card usage, we, we paid to renew the Heart of Iowa Athletic Activities Conference web domain.
Yeah, so that's.
That seems to be a monthly charge.
We don't use that anymore. I don't really think anyone does. Took a quick browse through that website and I just wonder if that website needs to go away. No big deal. I just thought if that's a monthly charge that keeps happening and might be something we can wipe off the book. They'll charge you, charge you into infinity if you don't sell them that bill.
Wonder if the web provider can give us information about usage, monthly usage for that, see if they actually, there's nothing on it.
I think Roland Story, one event on it for the whole school year, PCM.
So this is just activity announcements?
There's nothing there.
Is there any other content to the website?
There's nothing. None of the schools put their activities on there anymore.
I'll, I'll look into that.
I think it's PCM and PCM might do a very, like half a dozen.
Right.
Things that are still on there, but there's no sports or anything. It's just.
Yeah.
And thought about that website for a while and sought out. Possible, I don't know if our NCSD domain is wrapped up in that bill as well, maybe? I don't know.
I'll let you know. So on page 20 in the upper left-hand corner, mid-year comparison, pretty much a push across the top, but we are a little underwater. Is that the way I read it, or are we above budget? This one.
Paper, it's so easy. Basically break even.
Break even.
Well, not really a mid-year comparison, it's like October. Yeah, it's in, in the middle of the year, but it's like October rather than like December.
It's a push. I mean, when you're talking almost 20 million.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the minutes and the financials are the consent agenda and it is an action item.
I move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as placed before the board this night. Any further questions? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Brian, it's your meeting.
Okay, we're gonna, we adjourned the retiring board meeting and starting the organizational board meeting of the board. First item on the agenda is called order at, at 6:40. The roll call shows that all members of the board, whether re-elected or continuing, are present. And I have the oath of office for the new members.
I state your name. Are you supposed to stand up with you?
Yeah. You solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability discharge the duties of the Office Director-at-Large of the Nevada Community School District as now or hereafter required by law. Do you? End it. Item 1.4 is election of a president, will take nominations.
Nominate Mark Chitty as sport president.
Second.
Any further nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Pass.
Pass the torch.
Pass the torch back to you.
All right. We might need to elect a vice president and I would accept nominations at this time.
I'll move Tom Meyer, vice president.
We have a motion and a second to.
I haven't caught up yet.
I don't know where, I hit a button back and it jumped.
Paper time. No buttons there.
Should acknowledge that party.
We have a motion and a second to adopt and vote in Tom Meyer as our vice president. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Upper board time. Operating practices.
Do.
Yeah, that's just us.
7.6A.
So we're voting on all this?
Yeah. Yep, each one.
All right. Okay, roll call check down. 7.6, first up, authorize the board president and the board secretary to issue payroll checks, pay utility bills, and bills that carry a discount if paid within a specified period of time.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve action agenda 6 point, or 7.6A. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 7.6B, add Edward Jones as Nevada Community School District official depository.
I'll give you an explanation on this one. Certain investments at this time are paying real high and the local Edward Jones agency can provide, provide the investments. Edward Jones says that they have to be an official depository of the school district in order to do the service, do the investment service for the school district.
So they needed this action item to do that?
Yeah.
Housekeeping?
I may recuse myself. I will recuse myself. I'm a family member that is.
Oh, okay. I guess I didn't know the rest of the story. Duly noted.
I move to approve Edward Jones as a official depository for the Nevada Community School District.
Second.
Motion and a second to add Edward Jones as our, our district's official depository. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining?
Aye.
Thank you, Leanne. 7.6C, name official publication as the Nevada Journal for listing our board minutes and sundry other items. Even though I don't know how he reads them.
Do you have any other options?
Tribune.
We can not, this is one of the holdovers from way back from times long gone, as we found ourselves solidly in the 21st century. You know, we obligate ourselves to spend these dollars when very few people go there. I don't know what other platforming we could do. I don't believe what we are, would be in violation of any Iowa code to not do this, but we would have to put it somewhere?
We would be, we can, we'd put them other places, but you have to have an official publication, newspaper. But that code hasn't changed, even though in practice that's maybe a little dated, but the code hasn't changed.
All right. Well, let's not get in trouble with this thing.
And Joe, the Tribune would be the same cost.
Would be the same what?
Cost.
Yeah. And I'm trying to think, it's been a while since I put my hands on a paper copy of either of them. But if you publish in the journal, aren't they also in the Tribune? Because I read other towns in the Tribune. Maybe they just made the Tribune their official.
Well, when I, when I give them the minutes, I designate the journal specifically.
And like in the county's case, we have to designate all three papers, so we have to say it published in all three. That's probably what's happening. The last publication we did, I just couldn't pull it up on the internet search when I'm looking through the Nevada Journal, so I don't know if they just, I mean, they'll do it on paper, but they don't make it accessible online.
Is there an online journal?
They have a website. I don't know if they have.
I guess I've never looked it up. I kind of.
Because I think it now, actually now, I think it just bounces you to the Ames Tribune. And it, but it doesn't let you look up the things specific to the Nevada Journal.
How much do we, okay, let's, because what do we spend to designate them as our? And what does it cost the district to follow this Iowa code that makes them our official publication?
They started requiring us to submit them, the minutes online, so I've been using the P-card for that. It charges every time they do it. Let's see if I can find the bill on here.
It's a racket.
Well, the two times I published in, let's put it in, October, 14760, 15360 each.
So we're spending roughly $300 a month?
Yeah.
You publish our meeting.
Yeah, and I cut them down. I don't, I don't.
Because they, they charge by the inch, I would say, the column inch?
Yeah.
Trying to find it online.
So you are looking for the Nevada Journal?
Mm-hmm.
I think that Ames Tribune's site.
Yeah, so that's the first thing that appears.
Because I think it used to be like Nevada Iowa Journal, but now if you try that, it just goes straight to Ames Tribune.
Ames Tribune, yeah. But even there.
And even there, you try to search and it's like, you can't find that information.
So other than the paper copies, we really have no circulation?
Things like minutes, just our website.
Yeah, no, that's what we placed that, yeah.
It's all online.
Well, this would be an Iowa code that you'd like to see go away. I mean, $3,600 is $3,600.
There was movement last, well, there was a bill introduced, but did it get, did it go through funnel, first funnel?
I don't think so.
I could see where the newspapers would be upset.
Yeah, exactly. Especially the small ones.
Well, I don't mean to obsess on this, but it's money that really I don't think it gets us a lot of traction, not that.
If you're looking for any type of online presence, Nevada Journal is not it. I mean, I don't see any indication that you can even get to it online right now. But I mean, Ames Tribune has always spotlighted Nevada's sports.
Oh, I'd say they're more random than that.
What, what do you mean?
I mean, I, I, when I go, when we've done something, I mean, we have, as it was explained to me years ago at the county, was that Nevada has its own paper, that that's where we're nested in as far as our activities, both community and school. And they aren't under the obligation to carry us as a primary, we're a secondary market.
Publications, can they be done through, let's say, like the monthly newsletters, the monthly like city newsletters that come out in the school?
I think it specifies print, newsprint publication, a newspaper. It's been a while, a while since I looked at that code, but I'm pretty sure that it specifies that.
Well, good conversation. But we still need to approve it.
I move 7.6C that we name the Nevada Journal as official publication.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to use the Nevada Journal as our official publication. All in favor?
Aye.
7.6D.
That being said, we may want to think about that a little bit more when the time comes next year.
Yeah, maybe even ask some questions before we get to this point.
Yeah.
So, I mean, who even.
Who would you even talk to?
Who even covers, I mean, so when Nevada, just thinking back to Nevada's sports, when someone covers that, I mean, Joe Randleman, I know him, but he's Ames Tribune.
Yeah.
But he works, I guess, also for the Journal. But if we're talking about anyone else from the, covering the school, I don't know who that would even be.
Because I think when he ran for school board, it was all Ames Tribune.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
I mean, it's the same company, it's the same people. And I know if you run ads, you know, you could choose, I'm trying to remember, if you could choose one or the other, or if they kind of go together, if the price is different, I don't know. But, you know, I think as long as we have a local newspaper, you know, we should probably do it. But maybe we would better serve the people of our district to do the Tribune and the Journal if it's not a tremendous financial burden.
Well, we're spending $300 a month roughly just to do the Journal. Yeah, that's kind of a lift.
Well, maybe, you know, like I said, same company and everything, the same people that are doing it, you know, maybe it'd be 300 for the Journal and 400 for both. I don't know. I don't know. It's, it's just weird to think about.
I can tell you, because of my job, they're all the same amount. When you're talking about legal notices, it's going to be $40 for each Ames Tribune, Nevada Journal, Tri-County Times, or 5466, or what'd you say, 150, 140?
40, 150.
It's a conglomerate, is what it is.
Well, it's nothing that really rises, I don't, can't tell you if I've ever been asked about a bill that we've ever had. I think we spend more time parsing and discussing here with no follow-through from the public than I've ever been, you know, addressed with. Issues, yes, bills, no.
Food for thought.
We could throw.
Year from now, book market.
Put it on the retreat agenda to discuss.
I almost thought that. I wondered if it was retreat word.
Joe thought we should put that on the retreat agenda.
There we go.
There we go. Good job, Joe.
It's really kind of multifaceted.
Joe, you're a bright man.
No, maybe I should have said this before we voted, but I didn't think it was that important. Apparently I do because I'm talking about it, but you know, there's an element of, of, you know, our duty to, to keep the people in the district informed. And then there's, you know, something else, I think of, you know, historical reference and archives, you know, as, as long as there's a Nevada Journal, maybe, you know, this ought to be a part of that archive. I don't know. Things to think about.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a non-trivial amount of money each month.
No, it's not.
Yeah, so I said it's a non-trivial amount of money, so it's, we hope us to do a little bit of background and understand why, where that money is going and what, what we actually get for it.
Well, Dr. Gray, on behalf of your board, as we seem a little vexed in this sense, could you reach out to our elected officials at the state level and say that we would like to see if there's any traction they can provide on our behalf?
Will do.
Thank you. 7.6D, designation of legal counsel, Hallers and Cooney. Is there a retainer we pay every year?
No, we pay as we go.
Just now.
Whatever services we need, we pay for it.
Yeah. It's our lawyers.
I'll move approval of Hallers and Cooney as our designated legal counsel.
Second.
Motion and a second to designate Hallers and Cooney as our legal counsel for the school year 23, 24. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You got a lawyer. 7.6E, appointment of board members to respective committees.
Your current appointments are listed on page 27. Should you wish to keep those the same or if you want to change any of them at the time?
I'm fine.
I always had an interest in switching it up a little bit. I don't know if anyone else does.
What do you want?
I'd love to be a part of city school.
We could use some new blood. Promise me this, you won't talk about speed cameras.
I'll promise you I won't advocate for them.
I'll have to do.
If you want to own city school, I'd find getting off of it.
Unless you, do you have a desire?
Between, you know.
You want it, cherish it.
Sounds like we got a deal.
If anyone wants conference board, if that tickles anybody.
Pretty dry.
Let's, so give us a two-cent version of what you do.
Well, the Story County Conference Board over, is the body that oversees the county assessor. It's a board that, there's a couple meetings a year, budget meetings, things like that. That's really about all it is. It's a couple, it's a couple meetings in the, in the winter months. There's also the Ames Conference Board and that's the body that oversees the Ames City Assessor, part of that as well. They're different, different boards overseeing different assessors, so, I mean, they don't necessarily have to go hand in hand. Same person doesn't have to, to do both, but. It's mostly budgetary type stuff, you know, official stuff that they, you know, are required to have approved, but we need to get into some other stuff as well, especially the city of Ames here recently is, they've hired, been through a cycle of. they've hired, been through a, a cycle of, of new assessors, so, you know, we've had more than the, the typical amount of meetings the past couple years with that, you know, with, with hiring new assessors and stuff. I'm willing to keep doing it, but if anyone else has a particular interest to do it.
Now, look at the emails, that's good enough for me. And we all get the emails, right?
Yeah.
I'd be willing to do the, be the alternative to give you some break there, do that.
That, actually, that might be good.
Okay.
That might be appropriate.
If you can't make a meeting, Joe, let me know, I can do that.
Okay.
Sure. And Leanne, I think you'd be just very would-servile, but like, being in that room. So, by my count.
We don't have Ames Conference Board on here, though.
It's not on there, but it should be.
You got Story County, you got Story County and City of Ames Conference Board.
Yeah, on the agenda, I list both. On the page twenty-seven, I have Story County Conference Board.
Yeah.
I should also have the Ames with it, like I do on the agenda page.
So Joe's on the City School. Leanne is gonna take our conference board.
The alternate, or, no, sorry.
She's gonna be lead?
No.
No.
She's gonna be the alternate.
Joe's gonna keep it, you're gonna be the alternate.
Tom was gonna be the alternate.
I'll be the alternate.
Sorry.
I'm stepping in, I, I won't be the alternate anymore.
Okay. Who wants to be in on the, uh, negotiation? He is on that.
Uh, Tommy.
You guys fine with that?
Fine, if you don't.
No, I'm good. I've already done everything. After the chapter seventeen rewrite, or the chapter twenty rewrite and seventeen, it sure ended up something. Community Resource Center, Amisi, you like that?
I do.
It's a good, good group. Chris does a good job over there. I like going to PSYAC, it's only four times a year. It, Cody does a really good job. I would offer it up if anybody wants to get into, it's a meeting that takes about an hour and a half, starts at like six-thirty, seven at night, so it's one of those, if anybody wants it, you're welcome to it, but if nobody does, I'll keep it.
Remind me, how many, how many votes do we get at the City School meetings? Is it one or two?
We don't vote.
You get two, you get two council, two board members, administration?
Um, we don't vote. It's just a meeting where we meet to discuss issues that may pertain to both.
You gotta be under court.
So, if we have two members designated for that committee, both can come?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. You know, I appreciate what, you know, we started it up after a several-year lag, and you see what comes out of it. I mean, look at what we get in our board updates, you know. There's some things that really are, you know, affect us. Just the street, the street improvements that are gonna go around Central along was a good read next spring. On a recap, so nobody else wants PSYAC, so I'll keep that. Everybody okay? City School will now be Joe and Leanne. Correct? Anything left undone there on these assignments? Anybody wants to speak to or change now?
Add the Ames Conference Board, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll, I'll clarify in a board update for you.
Okay, that would be the last item, seven point six E.
Will you approve all the committee assignments as discussed?
Second.
Motion to second to adopt the changes on committee assignments as agreed to for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have no information. That moves us into the action agenda, nine point one. Brian, I believe this would be you speaking to us.
Yes. This year, the school district qualifies for two of the three applications for modified allowable growth. This, this started a long time ago because the bigger school districts in Des Moines wanted additional allowable growth for, for additional students that they have to, they would have to have during, during the school year. And for us, it's open enrollment out, not on a prior year count, and, and limited English proficiency instruction beyond five years, which we're requesting allowable growth for. Allowable growth for the open enrollment out would be a hundred and forty-eight thousand four twenty-two, and for the EL instruction beyond five years, twenty-five thousand six fifty-three, which becomes additional allowable growth when budget time comes around. It's a kind of a pad to make sure you don't expend more authority than you have.
These dollars are put into general?
Into, yeah, general budget, yes.
Okay. Every time the bell rings, a motion is made.
I'll move approval of the applications for modified allowable growth as presented in nine point one.
Second.
Motion to second to approve our applications for modified allowable growth as stated by our business manager tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nine point two, IASB policy primers. Dr. Gray?
Um, yeah, I've seen your, the changes that ISB is suggesting to a few of the policies. Look, most of these appear to be due to legislative changes, legal changes. Couple of them have to do with conduct, which they're just making sure that they're in line with the mandatory policy that you just passed. I don't see anything overly subjecting here, but I do recommend that we make the changes that they're suggesting.
First reading, this will come back to you December fourth, our final reading. On page forty-two, halfway down the page, point ten. Ten, no, ten, how do you read that? That, as far as designated, you know, superintendent, 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 and then three members of the community is appointed by the board annually. Is there?
So typically, we've never had one of these come up, but you would appoint the.
What's the mechanism for appointing?
We would, if that was needed, if this process was needed, then we would need to appoint three people.
Annually?
Well, we haven't had the need to have to do it, so we haven't.
You can't have a standing set of names?
So we haven't, we haven't pointed it and had a standing set, but.
We just went through.
We certainly can if you want to.
I don't see, I, all I'm doing this is one of those, because we sometimes, and if you've been on the board long enough here, sometimes we have snap decisions, where it's just like, you know, I'll reach out for an approval of something that pops up, where maybe dollars to be expended to exceed the authority for Dr. Gray to say, we need to do something today because something broke, something needs done, and then we get these texts or emails or both to say yea or nay. To me, this isn't easy. Just pick some names, have them on board, and they're sitting there. So. There you go. That's easy. Anybody else have anything that they've gone through and seen the changes as per legislature?
So up till now, all employees were not, um, subject to a background check? Just teachers? Is, is that the way I read that, or do I misinterpret that?
What page you on, Joe?
Uh, just the, the first page of this item. Yeah, thirty-one, the highlighted part there.
We have performed background checks.
On everybody?
On everybody, yeah. We always have.
But now this just makes it official and mandatory, apparently.
I got no bell. I'll approve the first reading of the IASB policy primers as presented in nine point two.
Motion to second to approve the first reading of the updated IASB policy primers as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nine point three, City School Facility Usage Agreement. Dr. Gray?
Um, yeah, we've had a longstanding agreement with the city in regards to reciprocal use of facilities. We haven't looked at this agreement in some time now. It's been several years. It was suggested that maybe we take a look at it. I did meet with, uh, Tim Jordan, and the only changes we made to it were that we made it broader. The old agreement really was more pertaining to the school and the parks and rec. And I suggested that we make it broader because we also accommodate, um, other city departments, police, fire, they've used our facilities, and the county has to, so. We just, the only language we changed was to broaden it so it wasn't just park and rec. Otherwise, it's worked well. Um, we use their facilities without charge. They accommodate us and, and we do likewise with them.
So going forward with the opening of the new rec center, parents of middle school athletes in the winter sports are gonna be pushed to early in the morning or late at night, they'll be able to use our facilities.
Yeah, that, that.
And that's always been a bone of contention with parents.
The new rec center, uh, won't eliminate, I don't think, the city's need for some gym space, but it'll certainly decrease it by a great deal.
That's the one that will always.
And our, our, as far as the middle school issue, we haven't had that morning issue for a few years since we went to the split season in the winter with basketball and wrestling. We didn't used to have split seasons, so everything was going on at once, and so now it's not, so we eliminated that part then, but that facility will help everyone.
Oh, yeah. So how long is, so we just revisit this whenever somebody gets an itch?
Well, we typically did it annually, and then it, uh, it just kind of fell off, um, feminized radar, so.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll get back to an annual review.
Is there anything with the new facility, city facility, is there anything that the school will have the desire or the expectation to be able to use it for? I mean, if you've got turf, we've got courts, but they've got turf.
Sure, yeah, and there may be individual programs that have a desire to work, uh, in there at different times, and they'll work with scheduling, just like we work with the.
Oh, yeah, that's what we've been doing for years.
Yep, yep.
I was just wondering if that had been discussed at the point, well.
Yeah.
You know, as your, I don't know if the football team would do, if I could see what your soccer program, we might like to have a little turf.
Sure, yep.
Will you approve all the City School Facility usage, Joe?
Second. We have a motion to second to approve the refreshed City School Usage Agreement as presented and discussed tonight. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda, ten point one, ten point two. Good to see we're getting some help over at the Resource Center, and I'm glad to see we are looking to adopt that policy or have adopted that policy to allow students that are inclined to work with young children because the need exists. Leanne, Amisi and I hear about how their staffing is pretty tough, and you have ratios of staff and students, and it gets kinda tough. Are we doing on our associate count? I see we're onboarding somebody. Have we got any openings?
We're hanging in there. I do think we still have a, I believe we have another opening of the elementary.
Okay.
Yeah, someone in the adaptive class, I always wonder how many, like, associates they have coming through there, because, you know, some of those associates know those particular kids so well, so it's interesting to see the, the different people that shuffle through there. Like, year after year, there's always a few changes, for sure.
I'll move to approve item ten, consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to second to adopt or consent agenda. Motion to second to adopt our consent agenda as placed before the board this night. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board member comments, nine point one.
It's good to come home on Sunday and see our ladies wrestling meet was the raving success. That went from zero to huge. So I didn't see anything in an Ames article about a Nevada hosted activity that mentioned anything in Nevada, other than it was in Nevada. How did our wrestlers do? Anybody know? I believe we had two place winners.
Yep, Grace Leslie got fourth, and then Cadence, I can't remember last name, got fifth, I think.
Wrong.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, they were two of us, she's here, yep.
She her walkie, walkie lady?
Yeah, I think so, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Says a lot about your wrestling program, that's why I enjoy that, that every day, governor.
The basketball has their first, like, home, they call it jamboree, something she thought tomorrow night, um, against Boom. Um, because they're pretty excited for the, the picture day today and media day, so...
Anything else going on at high school?
I haven't been there the past few days, so you can't ask me.
We haven't graduated yet.
Right, true. Um, not a whole lot going on.
Yeah.
People are pretty ready for Thanksgiving break, just have a little break in the night, and things like that.
Well, it's not in our, uh, agenda tonight in the update to see all the retirees. We will lose a tremendous amount of talent and experience here going forward, if everybody, if everybody agrees, you know, if everybody agrees, and it's not unusual to have some people pull back. We have been well served. Joe, you got anything? Usually you're pretty wise in your opining.
No, not really today.
All right. Amisi? No pressure.
I'll just make mention the fact that Marty and I last week attended the school board convention. I, for one, really enjoyed it this year, thought it had excellent speakers, and also I just, we did notice together quite a number of students there this year, I think that's good, seeing more and more students being at the school board convention was interesting, so I encourage you guys both to think about that next year, if you're so inclined. But, uh, yeah, it's a good experience.
I was sharing with Joe and Steve before the meeting, as we got here early, that on one of the breakout sessions, uh, sat down with the Iowa City School Board President and the Assistant Superintendent. They were talking about how they have a technology sharing agreement with the Johnson County Sheriff's Department and the Iowa City Police Department as far as their camera viewing. That they have the ability, and with the immediacy of being able to just flip a screenshot of what's going on in a school in the event of some unwelcome activity in the school itself. And, uh, I thought, as we've already spent the dollars to camera the, the facility, possibly in some form of some future meeting that Dr. Gray affected administration might want to have, bring that up and see if there's any feasibility to it. And we did get to see Justin Gross, and he said to say hi. Never mind. So... All right, our next meeting is... In December, oh my god. Oh, oh, oh. Don't say that now. December fourth, I see Dr. Gray is going to be, uh, down at the well.
Would like to be.
Don't see any reason not to, if weather permitting.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I don't know if you want to, this was, you had a pretty meaty board update, and I copied it off and everything, but it looks like we're in good standing as far as our dollars and maintaining our fine facilities.
Yeah, and that, some of those bigger projects, Dave's working to pin down some pricing and things, but bringing back. Those are prices that he'd had previously, so... We're not going to be in a position to bite all those off at once, but we can get them done over time.
Good. It's nice to see that much money remaining of all the things we went through at the middle school to have those dollars, because that was always up in the air, it took a long time to get, and then the gates, I mean, clearly, we've done a lot, but there's still some things, big ticket items that you're going to need to do here in the zero to five. Well, nobody else has anything they wish to say, would, would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.